... Come on, Tom. To the right, to the left, please. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which is standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tom?
Want to make our... Over time, we've grown in the number of property owners that view the meetings online. And so if you go to the Board section of our website, you will now find not only the agenda, and they want to prove the minutes and the videos, but you're also going to now find the entire Board packet, which will be available. So when the Board is going through it, and we reference, turn to page 25 or so forth, you can actually do this at home. So it's another thing that we wanted to do to try and make it easier for our property owners, and it was a suggestion of a property owner. And we were able to comply. So you can find that under the Board section, the entire packet. It's rather lengthy.
We have one addition to the agenda. We'll put it at the last item. It's from the Charitable Giving Committee. It's their recommendations for the giving. We set aside $25,000 each year, and they decide where it goes. That'll be the last item on the agenda. First item up is celebrating success.
Hold on. Hey, Chris, can you help me with the sound, please? Let me just back it up to the beginning.
Well, I want to thank you so much for all that you've done, for the POA and for the lakes and everything. Norso, celebrating success is our version of the Employee of the Month Award that we give out. We always want to... We call it celebrating success because we really want to reinforce positive behavior and we want to champion and celebrate when employees are doing outstanding jobs. And I think it helps contribute to the great customer service that everybody receives. So normally, this is for employees. We've done it one other time for a property owner that had contributed, and Rick came to me and said, "We need to do it again because they've done an outstanding job. We want to recognize you and thank you for everything you've done." So...
So that actually took place at the Fly's Tires meeting. They're holding their meetings outside. And so Phil Ward has contributed quite a bit. He's not an employee, but we're really, really pleased with the amount of effort that he puts in to help us out. The presentation that was made at the Fly Tires was actually about 10 minutes long and demonstrated all the things that he's done, but we decided to reduce it in size for... Make it easier.
Joan? I believe we have one more?
Thank you for allowing us to present this award. My name is Joan Globzinski. I'm the Director of Recreation, and I actually nominated Bernie Purser, who recently moved from full-time management position to part-time so that she could live her best life. And while the other presentation was 10 minutes, I could probably go on for 10 minutes about all the great things that Bernie has done. But the big thing is she graciously agreed to stay on to train her replacement. And after two months, she did a great job with that candidate. Unfortunately, he decided to go back to one of the jobs that he formerly had. So Bernie, once again, rose to the occasion and came forth and retrained the person who is now in the position. And that person has been thrilled with learning from Bernie. And when Bernie first came to me a while ago and said that she'd like to move from full-time so she could live... Leave her best life, I was personally very excited for her. Bernie's a bit of a social butterfly, and so she needed more time to do that. But I was also about having a heart attack because she truly has always helped the Rec Division stay together and has been part of the glue to make that happen. So I just want to appreciate Bernie, as does the POA, for all her years of service when she was full-time. And now she's part-time and still in the Rec Division, bringing lots of knowledge, not only to our new staff, but continuing to serve our members. So thank you, Bernie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bernie.
Thanks, Bernie.
One other thing that is new to our website. Mary reminded me. If you go to our Staff section, you'll see that each senior staff member has recorded a video that you can go through and you can learn a little bit more about the responsibilities of each of the staff members. This was Director Brandonberg's idea. It took us a couple of weeks to put it together, but it's very informative. And you'll find that in the directory.
Okay. The next up, the approval of the minutes. First up is July 23, 2020, Board of Directors' regular meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Jerry Barron?
Yes.
Second. Mary, second. Is there any discussion about the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes? Jan? Is Jan here?
I'm not sure that she's on the line.
Okay.
So eight to zero.
Next up is August 20, 2020, Board Work Session. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mike Abbe makes a motion, a second?
Second.
Mary, seconds. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes? That's eight. Any opposed? Hearing none, there are none. Next, Joint Advisory Committee Reports. Are these being presented, or are we...
No, we're going to have everybody... Now that we have this available online, what I encourage everybody to do is, starting on page 11 of the Board packet, you can read the minutes and you can see how each of the committees met and conducted their business. A lot of the subject matter for all three of them were the recommendations for the budgets. But we encourage everybody to read through the minutes to get up to speed on each of the committee reports.
So this is available online for anybody who wants to access it?
Absolutely.
There it is, right there, the full report. Okay. Next up would be... That would be Lakes, Recreation, and Golf. Next up would be the Financial Reports. These also are available on the website.
So the financials, we're going to go through. And this is the new setup that Stacy put together. Stacy is our controller. And you'll see that a full contingent of reports is available on our website. So we're going to pick out a couple of things now. You'll notice some of the latter slides, Stacy has mixed it up, and she's going to try and bring out different highlights each month on things that we would like to point out. So we're going to start with the POA excluding water. And you'll see the gross profit year-to-date is better than budget by 379... Oh, actually, worse than budget by 379,000. The biggest sharefalls are in POA overall revenue, which is 533,000. That is made up of 58,000 from golf facilities. Golf cart rental is down by 53. Pro shop, 49. Some of the wins that we're seeing right now is boat registration rental and rentals are up 81. Activity cards are up 49,000. And overall green fees up $25,000. And we received a forecast for August today in our staff meeting, and golf is doing outstanding this month. You'll see that worse than budget, when you're looking at all of our expenses, our bad debt is up a little bit. You'll see that it's 78,000 compared to a budget of 73,000. But you'll see we're better than budget on these bar charts in salaries, employee benefits, credit cards, supplies, maintenance repair, and membership, training, and travel. So if you can look through all these, we're doing really, really well. Now Stacy did call out one item, which is right in the middle, where you can see the expenditure for the trepholograph fire pops up quite a bit. But in these comparisons for this year, we're doing very well. So you'll see for the year, EBITDA, we're better than budget by $733,000, which is outstanding. Expenses are under budget by $1.1 million. So we're really having a good year. And you can look through and you see that salaries are better by 385,000. And employee benefits are better by 152,000. So the team has really pulled together, really tightened up their belt, and it's really helping out the year. We're actually having a quite a bit... Quite a good year so far. Looking at the water only, you'll see that gross profit compared to budget, we're better by 820,000. Year over year, we're better by over $1 million. We have so many people now staying at home. They're using more water, so that makes sense. Plus with additional new construction and so forth. Risk, very low risk. You see that late fees are down by about $20,000. But the big win is water sales are up by five. You see on expense side, you'll see that supplies, water meters are up. When you have more... Have additional homes that are being built, you're inherently... The supplies are going to go way up. And then main and repair water distribution equipment, $36,000. What's better than budget? Salaries are better by 54,000. Maintenance repair is better by eight. Fuel by nine. And membership and training by nine, also 1,000. So on the bottom line, you have the Water Department is better than budget by $736,000, which is just outstanding. And we're going to go to the Consolidated next. And you can see each of the departments and how they're doing. And the vast majority of all the departments are doing better than budget. The one... The three departments that are struggling a little bit, Member Services right at budget. General Income is down a little bit. And then Food and Beverage, not surprising, we're falling short of budget with the closure for multiple weeks and people's hesitation to come in. We're seeing that the revenue in the restaurants is slowly coming back. We're at almost 90% now of what we would normally expect. But we're still... Where we're missing out is the profitable banquet business. That's still going to be impacted for a while. So Consolidated, if you look at the water and POA combined, we're better than budget by 1.46 million dollars. So we're really having quite a strong year. Okay. Cash reserves. You see that water unrestricted is $3.5 million. Water restricted is $270,000. And that's tied to the 2020 bond payments, 659 restricted bond reserve. And then the POA, $70,000, which is tied to the 2020 plan. And you'll see here... So this is one of the new slides. Quite a bit of information here. But what you're seeing is... Let's look at the slide on the bottom left. And let's look at the dark blue line. So what's that... What that's representing, you'll see in January and February and March, those numbers... That line was pretty low. And then once COVID hit, that line started popping up quite a bit. And you'll see it pops up again when the $600 from unemployment kicked in. So those two lines. So what you're seeing is our collection staff is having to work very hard to make sure that everybody remains current. On the top left, you'll see the number of improved delinquent accounts is up quite a bit. We're starting to stabilize a little bit, but we're definitely having to work much harder. And on the top right, you'll see the unimproved have gone up quite a bit. So those are things that are of concern. And we're working hard to keep those numbers down as much as possible, given the challenges of the current environment. And then here, you can see how we're doing with activity card sales. So you see in the month of July alone, we sold 1,400 activity cards. Year-to-date, we're at 11,089, and that compares to 8,118 for last year. Carmen did an analysis, and 16% of the new... Of the activity card holders have never had an activity card prior to this year. So that's contributing quite a bit. You also see that guest passes were at 5,400 for the year, and that compares to prior year at 3,200. So that's up quite a bit. And boat registrations are up, almost 800 boats compared to prior year. And then a couple of other pieces of information that she shared with us. So you can see that our accounting and our Member Services departments have been extremely busy, signing up almost 3,000 additional activity cards, 2,000 additional guest cards, and 800 additional boats to be registered. So they've been very busy. So in my opinion, we're having a really strong year financially and the number of customers that we're being... And the number of members that we're able to service. Any questions?
Tom, do we have any idea... Excuse me. Tom, do you have... Do we have any idea how many...
Mike, can you speak up? I'm not getting that.
Do we have any idea how many residents are at or below the poverty level? Like, looking at the delinquent water accounts, like, tells me we've got, you know, some poverty issues going on in some places. Do we also know if some of those aren't clustered? Like, there's particularly bad neighborhoods or anything that some of that data could tell us?
Can you repeat that? Not too much. So the question is... Is are these clustered in certain areas? Do we know of people that are under the poverty line and so forth? I am not aware of any of those types of statistics for our community. But I can tell you it's... They're spread out all over the place. And our collection staff works very hard to keep them current, to works with them. We have a lot of people on payment plans. So we try and work with our property owners as best as possible to help them through. If they're going through a challenging time, we want to try and help them through that challenging time. And so, you know, I really compliment them on how compassionate they are in working with our membership.
Do we ever forgive payments? Or just defer?
We can't forgive assessments.
Or just deferring?
Yeah. So in some cases, what we're doing is we're putting them on extended payment plans and just helping them through a tough period.
Tom, the Water Department, the budget, it was 736,000 better than was estimated. I'm just curious, have we ever considered lowering the water rates?
Well, we've maintained our current water rates for 10 years. Now, we have had some increases on different fees that we've passed through, but we haven't increased our fees in 10 years. On a regular basis, we do an analysis to see how we compare to other like utilities. What I would say is, at the end of the year, if we continue to have... If we have an outstanding year, I think it would be prudent to look at paying down some of our bond potentially early. We wouldn't want to lower our rates and then all of a sudden, these numbers don't... You know, maybe we have a tough year next year. And... But that money is gone. I would... I think the more prudent thing would be to pay down... Pay down some of the bond probably earlier. With that being said, is one of the projects that Stacy is working on with the Water Division is looking at potentially refinancing our water bond to take advantage of the lower rates. So she's in the middle of working on that at this time, getting multiple bids so that we can be as... You know? If we can lower our rates, that would be awesome. So that's what I would recommend. You know? And emphasizing once again, we haven't increased our water rates in 10 years. And at this rate, I would say that I would not anticipate an increase this year either, although we haven't gotten to the budget yet. Okay? Ultimately, that's a decision of the Board, though. Any other questions?
The slide up there says water to POA loan. POA borrowed 375 in July. Was that last month?
So I... And Tia, we kind of talked about this on the phone the other day. Remember, always keep in mind that our cash flow for the POA is going to go up and down. When we borrow, it's not like this straight line in paying off the water debt. We're going to have highs and lows through the year. If we have more expenditures in a particular month because we have budgeted for more expenses, then we might dip down. It's... What I ask you to do is compare our year-end loan numbers. That's going to give you the best comparison, simply because on how you lay out your budget from a month-to-month basis, if, say, we had all the departments doing their projects all at the same time, you're going to have... You're going to use more cash in that particular month. Does that make sense?
It completely makes sense. I understand the cyclical nature of our cash reserves and our profit, but July seems like it should have been our profitable month, not... I mean, I understand October and November yearly.
So I actually looked into that because I kind of thought that too when I was doing the financials, and I had to go back through the numbers twice. But I correlated a lot of that to the collections because a lot of our borrowing and our big dollars on the assessment side are related to assessments. And when our collections go up, our cash goes down because we have... And our receivables go up because we don't have that cash coming in the door. And so our collections are up so much more now because of COVID, and so we don't have that cash coming in the door. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's what I attributed most of it to.
Does that mean we did not make a payment back to the water in July?
We did not.
Any other questions? Great.
Tom, were we ahead with our payments to the Water Department prior to that?
Yeah, we are well over the budget that you guys had requested. We pay back as much as we can every month. And so I can't remember. We'd have to look back on the financials last month, and I can get you that number. But we've more than exceeded the budget that you guys asked us to do this year.
Anything else?
Okay. Add, thank you, Stacy, Tom. Last month's open forum comments and questions, there was a letter from Larry Cook and Jean Struble. Jim Parsons was here and spoke to us. Tommy Fratag was also here. They did receive answers at that time. So we'll move on to the open forum tonight. Robert Schmid, please come into the boardroom.
You may have to press...
Schmid is on Pomona Drive.
You may have to press the red button there to let him in, if you would, please. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Board. I appreciate the time. My name is Robert Schmid. I live at 53 Pomona Drive. My wife and I built a house there in 2006.
Mr. Schmid?
Yeah.
Could you get a little bit closer to the mic?
Yes, I could.
Thank you.
We spent about six days in that home, because during the time we started construction, I got a new job, and we headed east, and I spent 10 years away from Bella Vista. That was the longest time I've ever been out of here. On the third day that we were in our new home, the ground crew, which I'd like to give some props to out at that golf course, they are some of your most diligent employees. They work day and night when the weather's bad, they fix floods, who knows what else, but they're good. But they were unloading five fans and five generators on, on the third green. I arranged my house so I could look right up that green towards the tee. I could watch everybody's second shot and their approach shot. I forwarded every one of you a video off of my back porch from two days ago. I'd love for you to turn your volume up so you can hear that when you listen to it. My back porch, my deck is unusable during fan season. That's May until September. I brought a scorecard. I've got a list of the 38 fans that are on that course. Ironically, there's none on 18. Put five fans on 18, see how long people enjoy that noise. It drives you crazy. You have to get away from it. Those fans haven't always been there. When I fell in love with that course in 88, shortly after it was built, it was one of the most beautiful courses I've ever played. Now, I think it's got some unintentional graffiti on it, and it doesn't work. We still lose greens, we still have problems with greens, but those fans roar every day. We've spent two, we've, we've used those fans for about 15 years in this next May, and if you do some rough calculations, that's 2.2 hours, 2.2 million hours of them running every day. I hope they're not going to run that way for the next 15 years. I'm not going to be there. But the personal issue I'm here about, I'd love for you all to look at that situation and find out that it's unsustainable. I think it is. We're wasting money. We're making noise. Decibel level on my deck is 60, plus 60, more than 60. I live in the country. It should be quiet. It's not. You can stand on that green, and you'll get 109 dBs of noise. Two of the fans on my green have been inoperable for most of the last year and some of this year. How important are they if we have two fifths of the fans done? I don't think they work. I don't think they, I, I think we were sold them by somebody who wanted to sell us a fan. So I'm going to leave that alone. I've got a card. I'd like to leave it with you. I'm interested in the fan situation on the whole course, because I think it's a mis, I think it's wrong.
Thank you for-
But I'm passionate about mine. I want my fix, okay?
Thank you for your comments.
Sir, I'm going to have Keith Eames, who is our director of maintenance, he's in the waiting room, he's in that, in the room, and possibly you and Keith could have a conversation in a couple minutes.
I'd love to, thank you very much. Very much. Thank you.
John Goodman on Hanworth Lane?
Just so the board knows, he stated that we had an email from him. We just got it 10 minutes before the meeting, so we'll have to watch it after. We have not seen it yet.
I smiled and said hello, but you know, couldn't sit anyway, so, thanks. John Goodman on Hanworth Lane. Just a couple points this evening. One, congratulations, Mr. Ab, being appointed for a position you normally run for and campaign for, so don't take my questions personally. They are in general. Why would one apply for a position you normally run and campaign for? Is it because you don't want to be put in front of 30,000 people, but rather 10 people privately instead of publicly? What is there to hide? What is being hidden from the voters? Was it, in this one, take personal, I, I don't mean it personal, but was it the removal of Kevin and his videoing that was promised? Was it connection to corporations or monetary gain? Not that these are valid questions, but they are questions nonetheless that each individual voter will ask or probably have asked. So my compassion to the board is, this policy needs to be changed. To be allowed to apply and appointed rather than run and be vetted is totally out of sync with anything that's ever been done political, neither here nor there. Videoing in the boardroom, the number one revenue stream for this POA is either assessments or fees, paid for by the members who live here. The tables, the chairs, the salaries, the titles, everything that is existing in this room is paid for and bought by the members within this community. So for a board or a body of people to say, you can't come in here in the place that you bought and paid for and have a freedom to video or say what they want to say is totally asinine. It's ridiculous. Needs to stop. We paid for it. It's ours. This building's mine just as much as it is y'all's. We have pride in it. We want to make sure everything gets out there. I don't think it's about privacy. I think it's about the lack of accountability from certain people. The removal of board members' ability to run for a number of years, that's just disgraceful. I mean, the people voted this person in, and we all know who it's, we're talking about. Any one of y'all were voted in by the people. How would it feel if y'all were told y'all couldn't serve the people that voted for you? Just think about that. Some final thoughts here. I have nothing personally against any of y'all. I've talked to y'all, Tia, I talk to her all the time. Great people. We put y'all here for a reason, because we had faith in y'all. But it's going to be a scary day for this leadership group, when the members of Bella Vista realize how powerful their voice is. Because simply put, you all are one election away from a title or a salary or a position. So I strongly suggest that everyone here toe the line and start listening to those people out behind this door and start doing what you promised you'd do. Thank you.
Jim Parsons, are you out there? You've come in, please? Mr. Parsons lives on Duval Lane?
I'm Jim Parsons, and I'm chairman of the Bella Vista Patriots and live on Lake Avalon. And last month, I came and I asked, would you please, the board, vote on this water shut-off policy? Because we're right in the middle of a pandemic here, and for people outside of Bella Vista, thinking that we have a water shut-off right here in the middle of a pandemic, where single mothers need to do the diapers and all of us need to wash our hands, just not a good time to have a policy to shut off the water. And so I asked that, would the board, since you voted this policy in, would you vote to perhaps rescind it till this pandemic is over? And so I'm asking right now a question, did you vote on it? Chairman, did they, did they vote on it?
No.
Second question is, why weren't they allowed to vote on it?
It has not come up before the board. We have not discussed it.
I beg your pardon, I can't hear with that mask on.
It's not a debate. We have not discussed it.
I guess I'm just hard of hearing, and I'm 87 years old. I hope you understand. I've been around a lot of gunfire and so forth. So I, I don't hear that answer, but I am still asking, why is the board not allowed to make these decisions? And who does make the decisions? And if they're made by the administration and the board is bypassed, why have a board? If you're going to make the decisions, I don't see the necessity for having a board, because the board seems like either they follow the chairman's recommendation or else they're removed from the board. And I just think that's wrong. And so, can you tell me one more time, maybe I can hear, why you didn't let them vote?
Miss, I don't control whether we vote on anything. We are a board of nine members. I do not control what the board votes on.
What I understand is they didn't vote, and it was made by the administration. Is that correct? And-
No, that is not correct.
The board did vote on it? No?
Hey, Jim, each board member has the authority to motion or vote, over here. We can each make a motion if we chose to. None of us on the board have made that motion or chose to vote on what you're asking us to do. It was not directed to us not to. None of us are tied by what the chairman says or any administration says. It is up to us to do that, and none of us have.
With these masks on, Chairman, if you would, please send me an email for your response. Thank you.
Will do. The next member to speak, Ken Fink from Portsmouth Lane.
Good evening. My name is Ken Fink, and I live in, here in Bella Vista. Been here for about three years. I'm a big pickleball fan. Dan Dunn here is with me. He's a big pickleball fan. In the room next door, we have, I don't know how many pickleball players. They love the sport. They love Bella Vista. So I'm here to just give you a brief overview tonight of where we are with pickleball in this area. I don't know how many of you are familiar with pickleball, but pickleball has really exploded over the whole country in the last few years. In fact, in Bella Vista, it's probably exploded even more so because of so many retirees. Just two years ago, we were playing, and we had a group that played every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday morning. And we'd play for two, three hours. People would come and go, that type of thing. Today, you can get on the court, players are playing every single day, every morning, every evening. It's just, it's unbelievable how many players are coming, more and more new players all the time, which is a great thing. But the only concern is, we don't have, we only have three courts in Bella Vista. Other places have up to a dozen courts for a similar-sized community. We would really, really appreciate the opportunity to get a few more courts. They would be put to use immediately, and I guarantee you, morning, noon, and night, those courts would be in action. One of the negative things that we're concerned about is so many new people would like to play pickleball today, but they don't even get the opportunity, because people are already playing. And as a beginner, you want to start out very easy and learn the game. But unfortunately, with the courts being busy all the time, a lot of new people aren't getting that opportunity. If we had a few more courts, the new players would have that opportunity, and that'd be great for everybody. You know, at times, we've had, at the three courts in Bedfield, we've had up to 26 players show up at one time. Now, one court can only hold four people. Three courts, 12 people. So that means the remaining people are sitting there waiting, taking turns, rotating in and out. The issue there is that people can wait up to a half-an-hour, 35, 40 minutes, just to get back into a game. It's just so crowded. It's just unbelievable. I tried to summarize where we're at with this. We appreciate anything you can do to help the pickleball players, and not only that, but Bella Vista. There's so many new players that would love to play, that just are not getting the opportunity today. Are there any questions that I may answer? Okay, again, we just thank you for your time and your consideration. Have a good evening.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
May I speak or not?
Oh, your name is?
My name is Dan Dunn. I live out in, in the Highlands. And first of all, we're really excited that you all are considering adding courts. It's, it's a real positive thing for Bella Vista and for those of us that enjoy playing pickleball. I've played, my wife and I have played for about four years. We travel around the country in the winter and have played other places and have seen really nice facilities. And we're excited about Bella Vista improving and coming up with, with good facilities. We live on the west side, so we're, we would be excited if you could convert the Branchwood tennis courts into pickleball courts. The advantage there is it would serve the people on the west side, but also with the trees around there, you don't need shade like you might need if the pickleball courts are out in the open. And so you, we can play more extended hours there. But again, we, we're really excited that you're considering this, and we look forward to more courts. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else outside who wishes to speak at this time?
Not to speak. They just came to show support. Did you want to see who they were, or?
No, no.
Okay.
No.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we have, at this time, we have several emails that came in, asked to be read, and I will read them, from Jack and Sally Bartlett. Was recently, was recently made aware that the board of directors was considering a change to policy for dependent activity card holders. This change would limit the guests of dependent activity card holders to five. It seems that this change is rather short-sighted, to say the least. Almost all amenities have a capacity limit. Swimming pools, maybe 100 or so, golf, 18 holes, tennis, total number of courts, you get the idea. Trails and parks are likely excluded. It seems that the number of guests of any activity card holder, including dependent, is limited by the capacity of the amenity. Example, a dependent activity card holder has a birthday party with 10 invited guests. After the celebration, the cardholder suggests that they all go swimming. They all go to the pool that has a posted capacity of 100. However, there are only 10 individuals using the pool. With your revised policy, six guests would be turned away for absolutely no legitimate reason. If this happened at a golf course, the revenue loss would be considerable. A rethink of this policy change is necessary. That's Jack Bartlett. And then we have from Tommy Freitag on Pomona Drive. I listened to the rules and regulations meeting last week. The topic, how often can a member run for a director's seat on your, on our POA board, was very upsetting, to say the least. R and R is recommending that if a director is removed from the board, that board member cannot run for the board for at least three years. Who in their right mind made this request? Please tell the membership. We have the right to know. My understanding, the slip of the tongue by Director Ab said, the Steve incident is what we are discussing. Quickly, he was informed, no names. The R and R voted to send this to the board work session on Thursday, 8/20. Now, during the board work session, the recommendation was brought up with discussion about the same. Some directors wanted it to be indefinite, others one year, others two, and they agreed on three years. This is completely outrageous. There should be no reason in the world that a member who has gone to the trouble and devote his or her time in research of POA policies and information to be removed by the board just because he or she is representing the membership with their suggestions. That is why each person has an opinion and should not be silenced, because he or she does not fall in line like sheep. We don't have an abundant of members that are willing to run for the board. Why would anyone want to go through this type of abuse by the board, just because they do not follow like the rest of those on the board? In closing, why don't the board put on their, and I quote, "big-boy pants," and tell the entire membership the reason why they removed Steve McKee from the board? We, the membership, have our big-boy pants on and can handle the reason, confidentially or not. Where is this transparency the board is always quoting? We will be awaiting the board's reply. At this time, Tom?
Regarding the letter from Mr. Bartlett, the policy change was a recommendation of the Lakes Committee to control some of the teenage parties that we've had occurring at our dams. We would have instances where a dependent cardholder would sponsor 30-plus guests, and we would receive- and we would receive large number of complaints from residents that live in the area because of the music and the rowdiness. By restricting only a dependent card activity holder, not, not a regular, not the adults, but only a dependent would be restricted to five guests, which the Lakes Committee felt was a reasonable number. Now, if their parents are with them and they're activity card holders, they can bring the 30 guests. It's not a problem. I spoke with the, the head of the Rangers, our Lakes and Parks Rangers. This policy was implemented only a few months ago and has, and they reported that this has been very effective in helping them to control all these events that are occurring at the dam. So it, it is proving to be a very successful change to our policies and I compliment the Lakes Committee for that recommendation. Regarding the, the email from Mr. Freitag, the proposed changes to Article III of the bylaws, the proposed wording would be convicted felons and those required to register as a sex offender may not serve on the Board of Directors. A director who has been removed from the Board of Directors for cause is prohibited for ser, from serving on the, on or running for the Board of Directors for a period of three years. There were lengthy debates regarding this proposed changes at the Rules and Regulations Committee and at the Work Session. I encourage our members to view these meetings, to hear the comments made by the different board members. I think they speak for themselves. And this issue, I presume, will be debated later on in today's meeting. Regarding the comments from Mr. Goodman, in accordance with our governing documents, Mr. Director Ab, along with a number of other people, submitted an application and the board voted that Mr. Ab was the most qualified. Regarding the live streaming, or regarding the recording of the meetings, I think it's important to point out, in the proposed language, that the board, that the meetings will be livestreamed and provided to our membership unedited. I think that's the really important, livestream and unedited and made available. And then regarding the removal of a board member, the governing, the board followed the governing documents as they are written. Regarding Mr. Parsons, we actually responded last month when he was here to his comments, but we'll do that again and I will email him with an answer. But Policy 3.09 was originally adopted by the board in March of 2011, so it's been in place almost nine years. It has proven to be very effective. And I want to assure our membership that we work very compassionately, I referenced that earlier, with everybody that is struggling. We have a large number of people that are on payment plans now, more so than ever. So I feel that this balances between being good stewards and we are providing the, you know, we're providing the utilities and so forth to these members. So we're being good stewards and collecting the money, but also being compassionate when these individuals, when these members are having a tough time. And regarding Mr. Fink and Mr. Dunn's comments regarding the pickleball, that will be covered more extensively in the meeting tonight.
Thank you.
I think I addressed everything.
Thank you. That will bring us to the next item on the agenda, which just happens to be pickleball. A capital proposal. Tom, you've got?
Yep, yep. So if you're at home or you're here, you can turn to page 83 on your board packet. You'll see that pickleball has been recommended a number of times, a number of years for the budgets and is recommended for 19 and 20. Unfortunately, those were cut. And actually, the pickleball courts were literally the last thing that was cut for the 2020 budget and, and there was a, a commitment made that we would, the board would reevaluate that towards the middle portion of the year. So far, the year is going well. While right now, our EBITDA is 733,000, better than budget, we're anticipating that that's going to soften by the end of the year and it'll be 517 by the end of the year, as we make sure that as many of our maintenance projects are as possible are completed. Management is proposing the addition of four courts at a cost of $61,000. And if anybody has any specific questions, Joan is in attendance, so we can bring her in. I also wanted to share some information. Over the last week, the board has received 45 emails in support of the courts. We also did, put together a quick survey to try and get some idea as to the appropriate location of those. We received 164 responses. We distributed those to the pickleball enthusiasts. Actually, Ken Fink was very helpful in getting that distributed, that survey. So of the 164 that were responded, 47 were in favor of the east side and 117 were in favor of the west side. So it's almost a two to one. And that's it.
So we have before us the question. I don't have any problem putting it where the pickleball players want to have the courts. By a margin of five to two, they would like to have them on the west side and that means, at this time, that means where the Branchwood tennis courts currently sit in a state of disrepair. So as you see in the, in the proposal, part of this money would be a capital expense for 2020. The rest would be for 2021. The reason for that is to give the base time to settle over the winter after the site is prepared and hopefully that'll help it last longer. So then, we split the cost over two years and by the time it gets warm next spring, we get the base down, get the nets up, get the lines on and watch them play pickleball. So is there any discussion on, we don't have a discussion yet. Is anybody going to make a motion to authorize management?
Yep. I make a motion to authorize management to move forward with the capital project to build additional pickleball courts. I'm not sure how to word that because the cost on the west side versus the east side is considerably different. But the idea of a pickleball court, I'm making that motion to do that.
We feel comfortable with the $61,000. We might, we might incur a little bit extra in the removal of the courts, but we feel comfortable with the $61,000.
Okay.
I'll second that motion. There's a second on the motion to authorize $61,000. 34 this year, $27,000 next year. Is there any discussion on that? Sandy?
I'm definitely in favor of doing it. One thing that I did notice in regard to the tennis courts that are there, in addition to the cracks, is that they are built incorrectly. They face east and west. So I hope that when they build the pickleball courts, they face the correct direction. They're always supposed to face north and south.
Yeah, we got that message from a lot of the pickleball players who emailed us.
And the other issue is, I know we received at least one email, there are people that play tennis at Branchwood. So I know what we're talking about here is removing the two tennis courts to put in the pickleball courts. Are we going to consider a tennis court there for the people that play tennis?
That's not part of the current proposal. It would increase the cost significantly if we added back a tennis court. We do have some fantastic courts at the complex. So I view this similar to what we did with the Metfield tennis courts that were in disrepair and those were removed several years ago. It's, it's a little unfortunate for our tennis players that like to use Branchwood, but we do have eight courts down at Reardon and we would ask them to use those facilities.
Any other discussion?
I'm confused now. I mean, last week when we talked, we kind of all had a consensus. It was going at Metfield. It was going to be 61,000. What are we looking at now? We've gotten so much different feedback from the members that's to a different location, that's moving the court. Are we going to be using that to demolish what's at Branchwood and build the same thing there? Or would it be, are we getting any additional pickleball or are we just repairing?
No, no. Okay, so, so what we'll do is we'll remove the old courts at Branchwood and replace them with four new courts that are oriented in the correct direction.
And how many are at Branchwood currently?
How many are at Branchwood right now?
Two tennis that is used for pickleball. It will become from two to four and directly for pickleball.
And we'll get rid of all the cracks that Sandy even brought up are becoming a hazard.
I thought when we talked about Branchwood, it was going to be like 150,000.
That's if we put in tennis.
That's if you put in tennis.
Big difference. Because tennis, these are going to be asphalt courts where the tennis is concrete with post tension, so they're expensive.
A whole different, a whole different base, a whole different surface.
Okay.
If you remember when we were talking about it, we talked about the, the need to remove those courts at Branchwood because they're not repairable and to leave them there, you're probably just looking for trouble. So I, I think we just go along with the, the pickleball players and that being said, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor of the motion as stated? That's eight. I hear any negatives? I do not. We're going to move forward with pickleball courts. Next item is a capital request from the Golf Maintenance Division. It has to do with purchasing two machines, greens mowers, that are set to go off lease. Keith has worked the math. He knows what he's talking about. He knows these machines and he feels that it's in our best interest financially to buy these two machines for less money than it would cost to replace them, is my understanding, on a lease basis. Keith, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, the only thing I might add is to make it maybe a little clearer while we're doing this. We've had lease equipment here since 2007 and until last year, that was all Jacobson equipment. During that time, many specialty attachments were purchased by us and owned by us. That once we change out the last lease in December to John Deere, like it looks like we will, those attachments will not be usable and we will not have what we need to maintain the greens at Scottsdale.
And these mowers are just for Scottsdales, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So they'll stay there and you feel very confident that the 10-year life expectancy is, is no problem?
I do because we're the ones maintaining them, so I know well how we've maintained them.
You know what you got. Okay.
Keith, how old are these mowers now?
This is the third year on the lease, so they're three years old. Typically, you get seven to 10 years out of a unit like that.
At the Work Session, I was asked to provide the lease numbers and, and you'll see that I provided them, but it is a little bit of an apples to oranges comparison, but it does still emphasize the savings that we would realize by buying them, buying it out.
I might point out one other advantage. This equipment that is leased would go back to the lease company who would then sell it to someone who will put money into it and then sell it back. We're getting it for just the residual that's left, so there's a pretty large savings right there versus going out and trying to find a used piece of equipment and then not knowing who maintained it as well.
A bird in the hand, in, in other words. You know what you got. You're happy with those machines. They do the job. Okay, I would entertain a motion. I'll make the motion to approve $25,267.73 for the capital purchase of two triplex green mowers that are coming off lease in December of this year.
I'll second.
Jared Barron seconds. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, call for the vote on that. All in favor? Any opposed? Next item on the agenda?
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you, Keith.
The proposed Chelsea Arthur Trailhead, an area that was, could prove to be a good place to put a trailhead. There's not any others real close. It's nice and flat.
Yeah. So for, for those at home, we're on page 87 of the board packet. What we try to do is with the popularity of the trails, in some areas, we're finding we don't have enough parking. And so we've located a, a spot at the corner, well, not the corner, at approximately Chelsea and Arthur. And I actually have a, a video here of the location. It's a drone video, kind of gives you an idea. It, this is, it's, imagine parking close to that car that is right there and you can see that there are good sightlines along this way and the trail is in place. There's a crosswalk for the trail. This video is just a little bit, just about one minute long. And included in here, Doug worked with the Trailblazers and developed a licensing agreement that starts on page 89 of your board packet. And our main goal is to alleviate any additional, you know, we, we want to keep people away from parking next to the side of the road when they want to use the trails.
It looks like a good location. It's open, good sightlines in both directions for exiting the area. And if you notice, power lines, so you don't have to worry about anything getting built underneath there. I would entertain a motion.
I motion to approve the trailhead, Chelsea and Arthur.
Second.
Mike and Tia? Tia?
I just want to say, I really appreciate the fact that this in Section 1 of the agreement that we're looking at does say three years that the licensee will pay, maintain any issues that happen. That's very great to be in there. And my, one question I have, and I guess it'd be for Doug, is this in any way a contract that we cannot, at some point in the future, change from a parking lot to something else on our property?
Yeah, there, there's no restriction in the agreement that would prohibit us from doing that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, I don't think I understand what your question was, Tia. We're giving up this property with this license agreement.
We're not giving up ownership. We're just licensing an agreement that they can build a parking lot.
Correct, for 25 years.
So if we decide, not for 20, that's why I was asking, not for 25 years, if we decide 10 years from now, we need that land for something else, there is nothing restricting us saying we can't do that to our own property.
We, we have licensed it for 25 years, so there would have to be, you know, a conversation with the Trailblazers about that. Yeah, you're right. We haven't given up ownership of the property. We still own the property, but there is a license for the, the building of that parking lot.
Yeah, I, I am still against licensing our land because as I've seen various cities that have become resort-type areas, you know, I still think that we should be charging for parking. That's my opinion. I think we're going to need a revenue stream in the future. We're, we have 100 miles of trails. If the volunteers ever decide they don't want to volunteer anymore, it's going to fall on us and the city. to maintain those trails and we're going to need a lot more than the 70,000 that we've already allotted. So, that's just my opinion.
I have a couple of comments. Okay, as I understand this, I don't have a problem with the parking lot. Okay, I do have a problem with the agreement and some of the things within it. As an example, whereas license, licensee has requested permission to construct and temporarily a natural service parking lot. Okay, I'm assuming that what you're saying is that natural is crushed rock when in reality, a natural surface is the current ground that's there. Maybe manipulated, but, so I have a problem with that of putting in a natural surface in there. Move down to, under the, the now therefore, the number one, the license. Again, it says to locate and construct a parking lot in accordance with plans and specifications agreed to by the law source. We haven't seen any plans or specifications for what that is. And I can't vote a yes for it until I see those and understand them. And in addition to constructing the parking lot, the licensee agrees to provide maintenance of the licensed area for a term of three years. Okay, but yet we're licensing the property to them for 25 years. We get into insurance and if we go with the 25 years, that means they've been holding insurance policies for 25 years on that piece of property. I don't know about, I, I wouldn't sign an agreement for that, no way. But I just have a real problem with it and the parking lots that are currently built. ACC says they have no control over them. POA has no control over them. Only the trail builders have the control over them. And I disagree with that portion of it. Because I think they should be built to the same standards that any other property owner within this community has to abide by.
Any others?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what Jerry's saying, but I will say that a lot of property owners aren't asking to build something underneath the power line by the side of the ditch so they can get on the trail. So like, I hear all the worries, but then I'm like backing up and saying, well, wait a minute, we're talking about the ditch under the power lines. And I'm like, do we, are we really afraid that we're going to need this land? Or that someone would some dastardly deed and try to make us have to pay out the nose to maintain it? Or God forbid, it's not some special gravel? It's just, you know, I mean, all of it to me looks like it'll be, you know, a parking lot underneath the power lines, so it's safe and sound for people to come and enjoy the amenities. I, I'm not overcooking this one. It, it looks pretty easy to me. Yeah, some of this language is interesting to get into and I'm glad that we have the example to start thinking about what this looks like. And I wish we had more budgets where we would just build our own parking lot and we wouldn't have to have somebody else come in. The reason these things I think are appearing is because we don't have any money to do it ourselves.
Seeing no other discussion, a call for a vote on this. All in favor of approving? Raise your right hand.
Sorry.
Opposed? Two. I have Jan here. She says she's having trouble hearing you, so if you could get your mouth right up to the microphone, so she can hear you when you speak. The masks really do cause a problem, folks, so you have to just about eat the microphone. The item is passed. The next item on the agenda is the 2021 budget timeline.
On page 101 of your board packet, you'll see the budget, the proposed budget timeline. We'll be preparing three budgets as we do every year, the capital budget, the operating budget, and the financial budget, also known as the cash flow budget. And you'll see that it's prepared, it's presented here and we're asking for the board to approve this. And we will move forward with it.
I move that we approve the 2021 budget calendar as presented. I can't get any closer.
Second. Mary makes a motion. David seconds it. Any further discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of the budget timeline? Raise your hand. Any opposed? None. Next item, bylaws, Article Three, Board of Director Qualifications, Number, Term of Office, Governing Power Removal and Vacancies. This is the first of two required readings for a board vote. The copy that you have in red shows the part that we would propose to add. It says convicted felons and those required to register as a sex offender may not serve on the Board of Directors. A director who has been removed from the Board of Directors for cause is prohibited from serving on or running for the Board of Directors for a period of three years. Before we have any discussion, we'll need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the Rules and Regulations Committee recommended changes to the bylaws, Article Three, as noted in the attached document. This is the first of two required readings.
Thank you, David.
Second.
Mary seconds. Okay, it's open for discussion at this point.
I am still opposed to restricting a director who's been removed because I do believe that it should be the members that decide who gets elected. I don't think that we have ever had a director who's been removed get reelected. And I believe that if a director is removed for a serious cause, the settlement could state that that director would not ever run again, which I believe has been done in the past. So I object to that sentence.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll comment on this. You know, I think that we've talked it to death about why you have to pay certain penalties for, and prices for your behavior and actions. And I do know that it's a selfless job to come and volunteer, period. And it's very hard to get up and face a lot of the scrutiny that the POA has had. And to be a board member in that, I'd laud anybody willing to get into the firing line. Now, in the terms of violating some rules that, that they have to ask you to leave and people vote on that, I, I just absolutely don't see how we could come back months later, in the case of like the election year, and, and do it again with somebody. It, it just feels like it'll be some of the same patterned players that only really run to be negative and prop up some type of, their own cross to bear with us. Like, it seems like most of this stuff is out to sharpen a battle axe, not to serve the community. And it becomes more and more apparent when those folks continue to, to do that. And so I, yeah, pay a penalty in three years, I thought was a great compromise. It gives everybody time to chill out and rethink how they've been behaving. I think it's a small price to pay if, if your peers, as an adult at a board for a community, has to ask you to leave. I mean, come on.
Tia?
I have to just, I understand everything that we've talked about, so many different sides of this that we talked about in the last meeting. I feel that we don't have a good consensus of opinion on should it be one-year, three-year permanent? Should we even be solving for a problem? We don't have right now. We're literally writing a policy for something that hasn't happened or become an issue yet, and I'm always going to be against that. So I, my suggestion, I would like to motion that we strike the second sentence in its entirety. I would like to strike the sentence, "A director who has been removed from the Board of Directors for cause is prohibited from serving on or running for the Board of Directors for a period of three years."
Is there a second on Tia's motion?
I will second that.
I just feel like we should, if, if something had happened where a director was removed for such a horrible cause that we know we cannot work with them again and we know they need a timeout, we still have the ability to do that at that time. We don't have to do it right now. We, if that issue came up.
Are you making a motion to amend?
A motion to amend.
And the second?
Wait a minute.
Okay.
We just got the second.
Now discussion. Discussion on the motion to amend.
Okay, if we don't have that kind of language somewhere in our policies, what keeps a person from running for the board that isn't really out there for the benefit of the community, only for himself? And he's going to, he, when he's coming in there, he knows that he's not going to abide by the bylaws and, and as we see it, and we abide by it. If it's not in there, then what keeps him from doing that? We can still throw him out, but that would be a deterrent, would it not? Because we don't want somebody in here that's out for his own personal aggrandizement or just a showboat or to put it on Facebook or put it wherever. Not at the, not at the benefit of the community, but at, for the benefit of an extremely, extremely small group.
But what are the chances that that person is ever going to get reelected?
Depends on, depends on what kind of a platform that he has to use. It was like I was talking with David Brandenburg earlier. You know, I like sitting on this board and trying to help our community. It's gotten very, very, very tough because nowadays, and you see all these emails and we see them every day. I'll get off my soapbox here in just a minute. We get so many emails every week. It used to be my personal email, "Thank you, Tom and Dave, David, whoever did that to do it." A board email, because we get emails. And many of them, except for the last couple of weeks, are so derogatory of what we do. And we're doing our damnedest to do the best things for this community. Not everybody thinks like that. Some of them are out there to deride us and degrade us every week. And that is my point of having that clause in this particular part of our bylaws.
Sandy, it really doesn't matter that the odds are low that it would ever happen. And Tia, you don't wait for something to happen to put it in the bylaws or any of the governing documents. I, I see this as us being proactive.
I, I again think that it should be up to the members to decide who serves on the board.
Okay, I've been texting with Jan and Jan votes no on the amendment. Anybody else, anybody in favor of the amendment? Raise your hand.
Say in favor of it? Yeah, what you said?
In favor.
In favor of the amendment. Three in favor. Opposed to the amendment? That's six. Jan voted no. The amendment did not pass.
It's the air purifier, so now you go back to the original.
Now back to the original amendment to approve.
The original motion.
The original motion has not been amended. The motion is to approve the Rules and Regulations Committee recommended changes to bylaws, Article Three, as noted in the attached document. This is the first of two required readings, so there probably will be further discussion.
No kidding.
At this time. All those in favor of voting for the?
Who made the motion?
David did. David made the motion and you seconded.
A long time ago, okay.
Got to, got to take them in order. Okay. Jan told me yes on the amendment. Everybody else in favor of the change to bylaws, Article Three? One, two, three, four, five, six. Opposed? Three opposed. Sandy, Tia, and Jerry. Over. It's passed on the first reading. Next up, Policy 1.03. This is guidelines for associations, committees, and Policy 107, board meetings. Second of two required readings. This is a board vote. This one has to do with recording of open meetings. Is there any discussion before we vote?
So you're including both of them at one vote?
Yes. This is Policy 103 and Policy 107.
I think you should split these. These, these are the second reading. The other ones that we've put together later on in the agenda are more generic, so I would, I would ask that you separate these, David, if you would please.
Okay, let's consider 103 first. 103 has Section Roman numeral six, recording of meetings. Open to the, meetings open to the membership will be streamed on social media in real time by the association. Plus, an unedited copy of the recording will be made available on the association's website. No other individual, group, or entity will be allowed to record or stream these meetings without the express written permission of the association. That's 103. Jerry, over.
I have to have my same comment that I gave at the work session in that I don't believe that it should be left as association. There should be a position, a person, something or other, other than just anybody, like anyone on the board under the association could probably sign a written authorization. I don't think that's what you want. I think you want it to one particular individual or a position rather than even a person. But I disagree with the entire process anyway, because I think it's restricting the rights of people too much.
I'm opposed to it also because I don't think that it gets at what you're trying to accomplish. I still think a policy that states board members must respect the members and a policy that states members should respect the board would accomplish much more than what you're trying to do.
David, can you ask for a motion first?
Okay, do we have a motion to approve 103, the changes to 103 for a second reading?
So moved.
David Welch moves.
I second.
Mike seconds.
Okay, thank you.
I'll, I'll turn on the discussion. I think, Sandy, in, in all due respect, until some of these same examples have been done to you, it may be easy to claim that it's not an issue. But I know for a fact, and I have witnessed on multiple occasions, these recordings and imagery from the POA be utilized by this exact same group to edit their own caricatures and videos of the events that have taken place here to be used out of context and to be used in a negative manner to personally attack and to be used in a negative manner to personally attack and often villainize people to the community through these recordings. You may have not had that happen to you. I have.
Mike, I never said it wasn't an issue. I said I don't feel that preventing someone from recording is going to solve the issue. The issue is respect. It's not them recording it. I have seen people take recordings that the POA has provided and alter them. You know, there was one of our chairmans when he was running for the board. They took that right off of the POA site. So I never said that it wasn't an issue. I said I don't believe that this is gonna accomplish what you're trying to accomplish.
There is a policy regarding the actions of the board and being respectful.
Then why don't we add that the members must also respect the board?
Do you think that would really happen? In some cases, some of these, what would we do if?
We would suspend their membership for 30 days.
And what would be the criteria?
I'm sorry, what?
I said, or throw them out of the village. That's not gonna happen.
I didn't say throw them out of the village.
If that was in the policy, it wouldn't happen. They would, they would still show disrespect, certain ones would still, God, I can't even say, show disrespect for us when we really have to watch our tongues every day. And you know how difficult that is for me.
I'm just saying, I don't think that, you're punishing the entire membership for something that you're saying one group is doing.
What membership is being punished?
We're not punishing the entire membership. Just a certain group that wants to use it for their own benefit, and if we stop that, it'll stop the rest of it.
Well, I hope it does stop the disrespect.
Thank you.
I hope it does. I just don't think that it will, but...
Okay. Jerry, over.
My last question on it. Do we know even right now whether someone's sitting out there in the office is taping all of this?
This meeting?
And if so, and if we pass this, what are you gonna do about it?
I didn't follow that question, Jerry.
I mean, Jerry, it's gonna be hard to enforce anything, you know? Somebody coming up and taking their cellphone out and taking a picture, anything can happen anywhere at any time. And now it's a culture where everything's recorded. We've got tons of things. We've gone out of our way to provide multiple versions of, of how these meetings go down, from the minutes, to the webcast, to the hard recordings, to the loading, to Youtubes, you know, just going every which way to provide that stuff. And I just don't think that we're, we're asking much of people for, please don't take video, home videos of us in the boardroom and do weird edits of it to make fun of us on the internet, please. I mean, how, how normal of an ask is this?
But, I mean, how are you going to enforce it? If you can't enforce a policy that says members should respect the board, how are you gonna enforce a policy when they sit at home and videotape this, or capture it from YouTube? I mean, how are you gonna enforce it?
Okay, we've all had opportunity to discuss. I'm gonna go ahead. I don't think there's, anybody's convincing anybody of anything. I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the changes to 103, the second reading. All in favor, raise your hand. I have approval here from Jan on 103. Opposed? Tia, Sandy, Jerry Hofer. Six to three. Next up is 107. It is the same language. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is your motion, Mary, to approve Policy 1.07 on the second reading, the changes?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have second. Okay, discussion.
Who seconded that? David Welchel. Thank you.
I just wanna say out loud that I am in favor of all the other changes on here. They're all wonderful, so I'm still gonna vote yes for this for the multitude of other reasons in this document, but yeah, I still don't agree with not allowing members to videotape. That's it.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the changes to 107, second reading, raise your hand. Seven. Jan voted yes. Opposed? Jerry Hofer, Sandy positive. That takes care of that. Policy 103, this is Guidelines for Association Committees, Board Meetings, second of two required readings. This is a change, this is the policy that we forgot to vote on a second time from April. And the change had to do with...
This was regarding the time, yeah, the walk-in balloting, walk-in voting for issues before the membership for a vote, and how you conduct those.
And this is Policy 1.03.2.
The Election Committee. 103.2, was that correct, Tom?
Yes, please.
Okay. This is about walking in the ballots and getting them there on time.
Correct.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the changes to Policy 1.03.2. This is the second and final reading.
Second.
Tia and David Welchel?
Absolutely.
Any discussion? Not a long time ago. All in favor of the changes to 103.2? And Jan voted yes. That's unanimous, nine-zero. Next up is...
On page 129 of your board packet, these are additional proposed changes to Policy 1.03, which is Guidelines for Association Committees, which went through the Rules and Regulations Committee. This would be the first of two required readings.
This one has to do with the removal of the phrase, of the community involvement, and the header that says Guidelines for Association Committees. We're gonna remove the Guidelines for and just say Association Committees, something that Director Hofer feels very passionately about. Can I have a motion to make that change? This is, would be the first reading.
I motion to approve the recommended changes to Policy 1.03, as noted in the attached documents, as a first of two required readings.
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Jerry?
I, yeah, I'm gonna have to vote no on it, even though I am very passionate about it, because it includes item number six, the recording of meetings, of which I disagree with.
It is policy. All in favor of the change? Remove the words? Opposed? Eight, excuse me, seven to two. Now, where are we?
On page 133 of your board packet, you'll see that there are a large number of changes with the word guideline removed. And what we've done is, since these are all the same changes to these policies, we've put them all together into one, and then we have another basket of employee, of policies that have, are slightly different changes.
Okay, does everybody understand that in these policies, we are removing the word guideline or guidelines? That's the only change we're making to this group of policies. Those policies being 1.08, 3.01, 3.09, 6.02, 7.05, 8.02, 8.03, 8.03.1, 8.03.2, 8.04, 8.06, 8.08, 8.09, 8.10, 8.11, and 8.13, 10.01. This is a motion for the first reading.
So moved.
Thank you, David.
You don't wanna repeat it?
No, I'm not, I'm not gonna reread that.
But there are, no, I can't find it, but there are a couple of places in here where we're not just removing guidelines, we're replacing it. Does that...
That's a second motion.
That's the second package.
It starts on page 157, but we're just doing page 133 right now.
Okay.
So Jerry, bearing you motion? Are you second who first?
Yeah.
Tia? Okay.
Oh, I didn't motion for that. Welchel did.
David did.
Okay, I don't see anybody looking to make any kind of discussion. I call for a vote. All those in favor of removing those words? Anybody opposed? Jan voted yes.
On page 157 of your board packet is the next set, and on this one, we remove the word guidelines, and in some places we removed or replaced with either rules, objectives, or procedure. And the, I should have probably mentioned this before, the effort to remove the word guidelines is because guidelines is a very nonspecific word, where in this case, we're using rules, objectives, and procedures, which are very, very clear.
Okay, somebody will have to read this one.
I motion to approve the Rules and Regulations Committee recommendation, recommended changes to Policy 1.03.6, 7.04, 8.15, 8.16, 9.01, as noted in the attached documents, as a first of two required readings.
Second.
Mary, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Jan voted yes. I vote yes. Anybody opposed? Nobody opposed.
On page 167 of your board packet, this is along the same lines, we're removing the word guidelines, but on this one, we're replacing it with procedures, and we're removing community involvement in the policy. This one didn't fit in with the other two buckets, so it had to be done all on its own. 167, David.
I got you.
I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Directors and Rules and Regulations Committee recommended changes for Policy 9.03, as noted in the attached document. This is the first of two required meetings.
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded. I see no discussion. I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor of the changes? Jan voted yes. Unanimous.
We had a walk-in memo, and this was for, Tia Bidwell had to leave. She had let us know earlier today that she had to leave at 7:30. But, okay, so we have a walk-in memo. On the 26th of this month, the Charitable Giving Committee met to go, to formulate their recommendations. Just a reminder, in the 2020 budget, we have $25,000 for charitable giving set aside, and so the committee went through an extensive number of requests, and they have their recommendations here, which is for the animal shelter for $6,000, BV Recycling for $7,500, BV Library for $6,500, Oasis NWA for $2,000, Belvisa Foundation for $1,000, Belvis Cemetery for $1,000, NWA Women's Course for $500, and BV Quilt Guild, and Mike Ab is an avid member of that group, for $500.
What is Oasis NWA?
I think it's a women's shelter. Okay, it's a women's shelter.
I love that we have this many great things that we can give to in this community. I remember a couple of years ago when I saw this list come through, and it's a really nice ending tone for tonight's meeting to know that at least we're in the position that we can still give to a lot of worthy causes, and I know that these, each and every one of these people will maximize these dollars, so I'm excited to see this.
We gave out the $25,000 in 2018. We did not give out anything, we originally had $25,000 in the budget for '19, but due to the fire, we cut it out of the budget. And this year, the Board voted to put it back into the budget.
And these are based on requests from these organizations?
Based upon requests. I sent you that, it's about 100 pages. I wanted to give you all the backup, and you can see how hard the committee worked on these recommendations. But these are all, you know, Belvis oriented charities. They followed the, the, the policy very closely. They even discussed after they made these recommendations if we, if they would wanna make any recommended changes to the policy, because now it's been in place for three years, and maybe we've learned more about it, and then they felt that the policy should stay as-is.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the recommendations of the Charitable Giving Committee? Mary moves to accept their recommendations. A second?
Second.
David Welchel? All in favor? Jan votes yes.
David, I have Tia's proxy, too.
Okay. That's it. Nine-zero, approved. That's going to conclude our scheduled items. That leaves us with the announcements. The Rules and Regulations Committee meeting is Tuesday, September 1st, at 4:00 PM in the boardroom. The Board of Directors GM meeting is Thursday, September 10, at 4:00 PM, 4:00 PM, in the boardroom. Closed meeting. The Board of Directors Work Session is Thursday morning, September 17, 9:00 AM here in the boardroom. The Board of Directors Regular Session, Thursday, September 24, at 6:00 PM, right here in the boardroom. And with that, David?
I will not be, I will not be here for the regular work session on Thursday, September 24, but I will be here for the other meetings on Thursday, the 24th.
Thank you.
I will be in Cleveland.
Is the GM meeting four or 4:30?
Four. Change in time. Four o'clock.
So it's 4:30.
I'm sorry, is it four o'clock?
Four o'clock. Yeah, change it on your little calendar.
I just wanna mention, you know, we talk about celebrating success, and we have a board member that has been very successful, in fact, two of them, really. The first one is Sandy. She's talking with a number of ladies in particular, and put together a golf match, and probably will continue to go ahead and do that. These were all ladies that either hadn't not played at all, or hadn't played here, just because they felt a little bit intimidated, and she brought them in. So congratulations. Thank you, Sandy. The other one, real quickly, of course, I think the board members had the chance to listen to the radio program with David Welchel. He's quite a celebrity, so congratulations to you, David.
Celebrity is probably just being real, 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 real small letters.
It, it, it was fun to listen to that. It really was. I enjoyed that.
Perfect for that, because he wants to talk. And I say that in a very positive way.
Okay. Thank you, directors and staff, for a positive meeting. We got a lot done, and it only took us an hour and 45 minutes. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.